The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
Our president is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Fred Wood, pastor of the Riverbank Holands Church, 3718. I reside on Sierra Street. I teach at the district right by the district office. So, man, I hope God blesses this city. I love Riverbank. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you, Lord God, for this privilege of coming to the meeting tonight to pray. And we're praying, God, that you would bless these leaders as you have in the past. How you've helped them to be a functional city council that work together and work through their disagreements. We're praying, God, you continue to give them wisdom from heaven to lead them. That we might have a blessed life and a city that is unified and heading toward the right way. We're praying, God, tonight, again, as they have different decisions they must make, that you would give your special guidance, that you would touch them. We're praying you'd put your blessing upon this town, God. Give this town your peace and your love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please be seated. Roll call.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell. Council Authority Member District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Council Authority Member District 2 Cindy Fossey. Here. Vice Mayor Chair Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any city council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. If there are any conflicts, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. The first presentation will be the proclamation Lights On After School. Is Ms. Aresella Zamora here?
Yes.
Come on now. Now, do you have a following with you?
Angela Bailey and it will be followed by the students.
Very good. Very good. All right, for the proclamation. Whereas Lights On After School is a national celebration of after-school programs and promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of childrens, families, and communities. And whereas after-school programs provide safe, challenging, engaging, and enriching learning experiences to help children and youth develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills. And whereas after-school programs support working families by ensuring children are safe and productive after their regular school day. And whereas each such programs help build stronger communities by involving students, parents, schools, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of the young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults. Whereas Riverbank Unified School District Project Action After School Cares Together in Our Neighborhoods is recognized in our schools and community as a fundamental after-school program dedicated to providing extracurricular academics and recreational opportunities for students enrichment in a safe and nurturing environment so students may become diverse individuals. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank hereby proclaim Friday, October 20th, 2017, as Lights On After School in the City of Riverbank and encourages everyone to celebrate after-school programs and their impact in the lives of our children. Signed today, October 10th, 2017. And for you and for Dr. Camp, right?
Yes, so I, Aresella Zamora, accept this proclamation on behalf of Dr. Camp. I would like to thank our after-school program advisors and leaders and all the community members that make this event possible. I think we'll be followed with the invite, but you guys let us know. We have a special guest here today that would like to make a special invitation.
Please.
All right. I guess I'll use this one, yeah?
You can do that.
Yeah, it's probably better for the kids anyway. Okay, so I'm Angela Bailey-Gabry. I'm the after-school program advisor for Mesa Verde. And I have some students here that have a special invite, so I'm going to kind of let them take over. So, students, come on up.
Hi, my name is Austin Sanchez and I'm a fifth grader in California Avenue School. Wait, I've been in ASP for about three years and I'm going to explain a little bit, wait, tell you. I'm going to tell you a little bit about Lights On. Lights On is a nationwide event. It's been a nationwide event since the year of 2000, so for about 18 years. And Lights On was created to celebrate after-school program. I think after-school program helps me with my homework while my uncle is gone and working. And I, the coolest thing that I think about, well, the coolest thing that I think is the coolest thing about ASP is that I get to hang out with my friends longer in school. Yeah, yeah.
Hello, my name is Abigail Beltran. I go to Mesa Verde. I am in fifth grade. I would like to share with you what the after-school program means to me. The after-school program means a lot to me for many reasons. First, I have been a part of activities done at the after-school program that I have never done before. I was introduced to tennis, basketball, readers theater, and much more. Next, it has shown me how to work hard at things and to be a part of a team. When competing with other schools, I have met new people. While my team accomplished our goal, the after-school program is also a place where I can spend more time with my friends doing homework. And the leaders have also taught me a lot. As you can see, the after-school program means a lot to me because of all the positive things it has shown me, like sports, competition, friendship, and getting work finished. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ariana Felicitas Garcia. I attend after-school program at RLA. That stands for Riverbank Language Academy. I am in fifth grade in the after-school program and I will be inviting you to Lights On. It will be on Friday, October 20th, from 3:30 to 5:30 at California Avenue Elementary. Do you want to get spooky? There will be a fun house and a taco truck with more activities and food. Thank you.
So, the students do have some invitation cards and then our flyer. And I know that there might be enough flyers to pass out to the audience as well because, of course, everyone's invited. It's a community event. We usually see about 1,200 people there, so it's a big event for Riverbank. It's only a very short time. It's two hours, 3:30 to 5:30, but I've had some kids tell me that it's the best day of their life. So, if you guys can be there, we always appreciate having the support. Like Austin was saying, Lights On is a nationwide event, so the After-School Alliance has already taken about 8,000 registrations that there will be events happening throughout the country, so it's pretty exciting. It's a big event just to, you know, bring awareness to what after-school is doing in our communities because we are the ones that are keeping the lights on for a lot of the kids in the community. After-school program here in Riverbank, we service over 450 students a day. So, that's a lot of kids that we're keeping safe and that we know where they're at, what they're doing, bringing, you know, different activities that they may not be introduced to in a regular situation. So, we really do pride ourselves in the work that we do, and I think it comes from the students. They wrote these words. This is totally them, that they really appreciate the program, and I think the families would agree with me, too. So, yeah, we hope to see you guys out there. Okay?
Well, thank you very much, and on behalf of the city council, thank you for the invitation. And I believe most of us do attend, and we will be attending, I don't know, I will be there. I'm sure all the other city council members will be there on October 20th. Well, thank you very much.
There will be a taco truck. You call me to tell you.
All right, the next thing is very, very positive. Ifigro and Amanda, will you please come on up here? I don't know if you, come on up, come on up. You guys have to face the audience. Okay, this couple here put themselves in grave danger to help another resident. Now, I got to ask you, did you know that pit bulls were dangerous?
Yes.
And you still did it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, the City of Riverbank takes great pride in presenting the certificate of commendation of valor to Isidro de Jesus Carrasco and Amanda Carrasco for your immediate actions that halted a vicious dog attack. On September 24th, 2017, they intentionally placed themselves in grave danger while they fought off a vicious animal and freeing a defenseless resident and her dog, preventing further injury. Their noble courage and act of kindness to ensure safety of their fellow Riverbank resident is an example for all of us. And the sign today, October 10th, and I want to thank you very much on behalf of the city council and the City of Riverbank. So, would you like to address the...
Well, like nervous, never been here before, you know, so I don't know what to say. So, I guess I will do it again if ever, I hope never happens, right? But I would do whatever it takes just to save someone else's lives, you know.
Well, thank you very much. Item 1.3, update on Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, council members. Thanks for having me tonight. Really nice to come off of a couple of positive events here tonight. So, we have a new chief on board. Hopefully, you guys have all met him by now. It's been a few months. Tonight, it looks like Chief Wise is here in his place. He is on vacation for this week. We have a few things going on. We're really excited to have the paramedic onboard on the Riverbank engine, and so that's a great addition to our community. We are hoping to near the end of negotiations with our firefighters and get some contracts updated in moving forward with our new chief onboard. And we also look forward to, I know there's probably a little bit of disappointment in not having comments from the fire department yet as far as Crossroads West. We, as we had discussed, having the opportunity to review the full EIR before we responded to just a portion of it. So, that was our goal in being able to provide thorough and thoughtful comments on the entire document once it's ready for review. Questions?
On the EIR, one of the pieces that we're looking for, you can comment on the EIR. I have no problem with that. We do need to know what are your needs. And then you can determine what your costs are going to be, and then we can build that into development fees. I have 30 days to put the EIR out and the specific plan. And in that 30 days, if I don't get anything, we'll have to use the 2014 development fees or the structure that you have. So, you're putting me in a very difficult, this whole council in this city, in a difficult spot. There's a lot of things that have to go on to get this project started, and that's one of them. I'm sorry, but we're going to have to go from a starting point.
We were afraid of...
Does that make sense, chief? Yeah, thank you.
What we had discussed was having the limited portion of it. We were fearful that if we commented on that part of it, and there was another section, perhaps, traffic that might also have different implications for the fire department. We wanted to make sure that our comments were thorough and could address every part of the EIR instead of just the smaller segment. Is the whole draft available for us?
The draft will be available within the next 30 days.
Okay.
Some pieces are being finalized.
Got it.
However, what should, you should already know, is what your requirements are in a firehouse.
Okay?
What would be the best location for that? And where we can start from there. The remainder of it, if there are problems with circulation or any other traffic management, would be welcome to have that. But we need to get the funding together.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What I would maybe just add to that, and the chief and I have kind of been talking about it over the last week, is perhaps what we really are interested in at this stage is some general comments on really more of the specific plan document. And the EIR, obviously, you know, totally understand that perspective. One suggestion might be that you provide what comments you can now and then, you know, hopefully not duplicative if you have to again. But I had been in contact with him as of just a couple of days ago, so we're going to set up a meeting to discuss that.
That would be great.
Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Everything else going?
I think so.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Item 1.4, Standards Valley Vision Stanislaus 2018 Regional Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Again, I'm Kendall Flint. Very happy to be back here in Riverbank. Got a very brief presentation for you this evening because the mayor threatened me before the meeting. So, we will get this up there and hopefully get it going. Oh, really? Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so what I'm here to do tonight is basically give you an update on the Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy. And we're still, of course, branding this as Valley Vision Stanislaus. And essentially, what this is, are we on? Can you advance for me? Okay, so depending on how people move through the county, some people prefer to be on our buses. Others are looking forward to the next slide, to the coming of ACE, which will be here potentially in the next couple of years. I know the mayor is very interested in that. Next slide. We're also having a number of folks that are biking. We've seen a tremendous uptick in the number of, the number of folks that are really supportive of bike and pedestrian trails like we have also here in Riverbank. Next slide. Our highway system, we actually have 3,000 miles worth of highway and roadway throughout the county, but both in the unincorporated areas, of course, and in the cities. Next slide. And then we have a number of folks that have special needs, like they may have point-to-point services for seniors, veterans, students, people with special disabilities. Next slide. And then we have, of course, our connectors, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about this. Our east-west connectors like 132, South County Corridor, North County Bypass, all kinds of things that we're looking at right now. Next slide. And then, of course, we have our agricultural community. And the ag community is basically the heart and soul, the heart and soul of our county. So, we are very concerned about making sure that we're preserving farmland and that we're also being able to get goods and services to market at the right time. Okay, so the plan itself, this is mandated by the federal government. The Regional Transportation Plan is the mechanism which we put in projects for funding from the federal and state government, right? So, they look and see everything that we're doing and try to figure out if we're actually being responsible with our dollars and, of course, moving forward in a holistic manner, where we're taking into consideration what other jurisdictions are doing. It has a minimum 20-year horizon, and it's updated every four years. It used to be every two years. There's some push at the moment to make that every 10 because we were just here four years ago. So, in this case, we're looking at all the different modes of transportation that every agency is looking at over the next 20 years. So, as I mentioned, that's buses, rail, highways, expressways, everything. And the idea is to come up with a shared vision of sort of the way that the county wants to develop moving forward. We're also linking transportation choices with land use and housing and employment. And the purpose of that is really to make sure that as we go forward, we're going to have the ability to make sure we've got places, transportation in the places that we need them. So, each of the member agencies has given us a list of their projects. We met individually with the staff here at Riverbank, got what your plan is based on your circulation element and other things for the next 20 years. That's combined with all of the other agencies into a document that then takes a look at those funding sources. And as the mayor knows, our funding sources are greatly enhanced this time around than they were four years ago when you did this previously. I'll talk about that in a moment. It has to meet all the existing requirements for planning in California and federal guidelines, and it has to be compliant with SB 375. That is a target for reducing greenhouse gas emissions that are generated right here in the county by 15% at 2025. It also has to be compliant with the California Environmental Quality Act and environmental justice. So, we're ensuring that we are looking at the impacts of these investment packages on the environment and also making sure that they are fair to all residents in our communities and don't benefit one group over the other. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, it has to be consistent with all the federal and state guidelines. And then one thing I wanted to point out here, social equity and healthy communities. Again, the idea that we don't have all the good projects going to one side or one community and no projects going to another. So, everyone has something that's in it for them, and it's generated to make sure we do have that balance. And frankly, the trend in transportation right now is to try to get us out of our cars and walking, biking, riding, doing some other thing. So, we do look very closely at how these plans support healthy communities. Next slide. So, I've already spoken just briefly about SB 375. The last time around, there was some concern that because this is connecting land use, that it somehow might override the existing general plans in our communities, and that is not the case. So, we're building on the City of Riverbank's general plan. And in some cases, like Series right now, they're updating their general plan right now. So, we're looking at where they're intending to go forward as opposed to where they've been. So, all that is part of the mix, does not supersede local authority. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, all of the cities are in there. Now, the map on the right shows all of the projects that were included in Measure L. Measure L. And some people do have some questions about this, because the scenarios, no matter which one we come up with, all of them will have the projects that were accepted by the voters in L. So those will exist. We have 18 of them, I believe, and they, you can see kind of go countywide. Each and every jurisdiction, of course, has their own local roadway projects, and those things are also included as we go forward. Next slide. So at this point, we're coming towards the end of our first phase of outreach. We're doing rotary meetings, senior clubs, veterans, doing meetings in Spanish. In fact, we've got a Spanish language workshop that we'll be holding here in Riverbank for your residents, similar to what we did during Measure L. And then, out of all of that information, and the, the work of the Stan cog board, as well as the public input and the consultant input, we've developed four scenarios. And a scenario is essentially a laundry list of investments that are themed. So one might be higher in connecting people in inner-city areas. Another might be more emphasis on bike, ped, and rail types of, rail types of investments. So each one is very similar in some ways, but they distinct themselves in that kind of thematic way. Next slide. So the big news here that has changed, obviously Measure L and SB 1. These two things fundamentally change the landscape of what we can include in our plan. As the plan has to be fiscally constrained, which means it has to have a detailed plan for how these projects might be fully funded over the life of the plan. Measure L brings in approximately $1 billion, and that's before we start leveraging that for additional state and federal funds. And SB 1 likewise brings in hundreds of millions of dollars, $400 million alone for bringing ACE here to Stanislaus County. And that would include the, getting it to Modesto, Turlock, and Series. So those combinations of things really do help us better, better address the needs. I know there's some questions out there about SB 1, whether that's really necessary. And I can tell you that even with the, the passage of L, it still wasn't enough to do everything everybody wanted to do. SB 1 gets us a little closer, but there's definitely still a need for more funds, which is why we're happy to be able to leverage moving forward. Next slide. So right now, we're just at the very end of those technical studies and analysis. So basically, the San Joaquin Council of Governments has a series of models, and we take our four proposed scenarios and run them through these models. And then they get sort of a scorecard based on their performance in several areas, which we'll address in a second. Once we finish that, and then the next round of public workshops and presentations, a preferred scenario will move forward. And then that will move through the environmental review process. We expect then to have that back out to the public in the spring with adoption by the Stan cog board likely in June, and hopefully the ARB, or Resource Board blessing it later in the year. Next slide. So these are the things we look at in terms of measurement. Mobility, the ability for each one to get people through the county in efficient manner. Social equity, what we were just talking about before, making sure it's fair to everyone. Economic and community vitality. We want to be putting investments in places where they're going to do the most good in terms of generating jobs, employment centers, or making it easier for people in manufacturing to get goods to market. The sustainable development pattern is really about maintaining our open space, and of course, preserving our ag land. So we don't want to just pave over everything. We want to make sure we've got something there for the future. Environmental quality, exactly what it sounds like. How does the scenario impact our physical environment in terms of air quality, noise, light, water, all these other things that we look at in environmental review. The last two, safety and health. System preservation, safety, basically don't get killed on the road. We want good roads. We want good lighting. We want a bus system that works well. Health, again emphasizing they really want us all out of the cars and walking and biking, although it's darn hot here in the summer, and me myself, I can't do it. And then system preservation, really taking a look at the existing things we have, and making sure that we're addressing the needs for those things first before moving on to other types of projects. Next slide. So the four, the four scenarios, we presented some upcoming workshops. And again, we're, we're at the tail end of making the presentations to city and county members. However, there's also currently right now, and after we get the next round, online surveys. So if you didn't make the first round of workshops, it's not too late to weigh in on some of the questions we asked there. And when we go out to some of these different groups, we're continuing to ask those questions and try to drive more people to the website. We don't frankly get huge numbers of people at public workshops, which is why, you know, today and every day, for the last several months and for the foreseeable future, we go out to the rotaries and all these other groups to ask them, get them engaged, and talk with people about this process. Next slide. So our workshops coming up are basically, actually, that's an old slide. I just realized that. We moved one of them. So they're the 26th in Series, the 6th in Modesto, and then the 13th in, I can't read that one, Newman, in the city of Newman. And I have little cards in front of all of the council members that are, have the dates on them. And if folks in the audience want to get information, you can go to either the stan cog.org site, or valleyvisionstanislaus.org, and get more information about the process, weigh in on the surveys that are there now. And at least on the stan cog.org site, you can also get more information about Measure L. You will be able to soon get more information about ACE Forward, and everything that sort of relates to the transportation things we're doing now. Next slide. And again, my name is Kendall Flint. I'm the outreach, outreach task manager for this project. I'm also working with Stan cog on the implementation of Measure L, and looking forward to working with the mayor on some fun things for days forward. But my number and contact are there. I believe that I'm your city manager, and most of the folks here have other ways of getting in touch with me. But if there's a group that you want us to come out and talk to, if you have questions about anything relating to this process, I'm available at any time by email or by phone. Elizabeth Hahn is our project manager from Stan cog. And I did want to note, we have Lakshmi, say hi Lakshmi. Lakshmi's also from Stan cog. She's working in their program department. And she's joining me here tonight to also be available if you have any questions regarding transit and all that kind of good stuff. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anyone from council have a question, comment?
No, thank you.
I appreciate you being out here. We have to consider some of the advances that we have neglected. I heard the CEO of Lyft, I think I mentioned this, saying that by 2025, there'll be autonomous vehicles, there'll be flooding all cities, and it's gonna eliminate a lot of the, the vehicles on the road, and it's going to be all-electric. So that's something to either look forward to, or look out for.
I've seen minority report. It doesn't always work out well, so I'm trying to keep an open mind there. But yeah, it is happening. One thing to note, though, that the California State Legislature is looking at vehicle miles traveled as a mechanism for road repair as opposed to gas tax. So I think by the time we come around to this again in four more years, we might be seeing some of these other transitions in the way we do our transportation.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, public comment. Members from the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council LRA board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot and will not be discussed. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the city council LRA board. Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the consent calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of the September 26, 2017 city council and local redevelopment authority minutes. Does anyone wish to pull, or do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar as stated.
I second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second on the consent calendar.
Councilor Authority members, Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5, public hearing. Item 5.1, continuation of the notice, public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution to approve the city's final budget for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Very brief report on this. You know, as council is well aware, city's in ongoing labor negotiations with, with both of their employee groups. We have been unable to finalize a labor deal at, at the current point, especially with regard to specific sections that affect the budget. Therefore, we are requesting that the notice public hearing be continued to the October 24 date, if it pleases the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Since this is notice, this is a public hearing. I open to afford the public. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, and request at the discretion of the council whether we continue.
I make a motion that we continue this item to the next.
And I second.
We have a motion to continue, and a second.
Council members, Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, consideration of a resolution approving general plan amendment number 2017-01, to amend the land use element to include a specific plan land use designation.
Thank you, Mayor. Our contract planner, John Anderson of JB Anderson and Associates, is going to be giving the staff report tonight. One clarification item that I wanted to note that I didn't have a chance to correct on the agenda prior to it going out was that while it's not a direct task in the specific plan, it is referenced as a economic development tool, which is the, is the objective of the specific plan. John?
Let's see if it works. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Anderson, JB Anderson, land use planning, contract planner with city of Riverbank, here tonight to talk about a general plan amendment we've been working on probably about six months or so. It's a, it's a, it's a new general plan designation. It was a general plan designation that wasn't part of the deliberations and the effort that was put forth by the general plan committee, and ultimately adopted by the city council back in 2008. This is a designation that would be very unique, very unique to certain identified properties, that would be part of an adopted specific plan. It wouldn't apply to specific plans that are adopted currently. So it wouldn't apply to the downtown specific plan, for example. It wouldn't apply to the crossroads specific plan, of which is about 95% built out, nor would it apply to the Riverbank Industrial Complex that has an adopted specific plan as well. The idea is that it would be available for new specific plans as they move forward. It is a, is a specific plan designation which in essence allows for greater flexibility. That's kind of the idea, greater flexibility of land use boundaries within a defined area, according to a matrix that would be adopted to establish maximum densities and intensities. So I've got a short, short PowerPoint presentation I'll go through, as well as kind of explain the action and deliberation that the planning commission went through, and then present it to you for your opening and conducting a public hearing, and then your consideration. So, Annabelle, I'm pointing this in which direction?
This here.
This direction, okay. So, again, it's a general plan amendment. It's a, it's a proposal for a new specific plan. It is traditionally, when we deal with properties, they have zoning. Everybody knows about zoning. But underlying zoning is a general plan designation which tells us as planners, what is the intent? Is it to be commercial? Is it to be residential? What kind of, what kind of residential? What kind of density? Is it gonna be civic, et cetera? So, so the idea behind a specific plan designation is that it's, it's more tuned, more focused on those specifics that would be contained in a specific plan itself. So here we are. Specific plan land use designation can be established and designate according to certain reasons, and then goes through kind of the criteria. Include a mix of land uses, which I've talked about previously, establish effective land use controls, and preserves the integrity of the existing adjacent development. It's a, it's only to be used in defined areas. Again, part of an adopted specific plan area. Could cover multiple specific plan areas. However, I, I doubt that'll be the case. And then, of course, it needs to be consistent with what the annexation strategies are that are currently in, in existence. Requires obviously a submittal of a matrix, land use matrix, and I'll go through an example here. It would be consistent with the boundaries of the specific plan area, so we couldn't go beyond the boundaries of the specific plan area. And then allows, basically, it suggests to abandon the existing general plan designations that are underlying that property in favor of a specific plan designation. So, we would be amending, if, if a specific plan designation would be established, we'd be amending the general plan land use map to cover such a thing. We would also include a description of uses, and include with that a land use matrix. So here's kind of a case study that the commission asked that we put together. Typical 60-acre site, of which 30 acres is designated LDR, which is low-density residential, 15 acres MDR, medium-density residential, and 15 acres CC, or community commercial. Developer wants to develop a specific plan for the area. Project would include a GPA rezone and specific plan. All of these things would have to be adopted by council in order for it to move forward. So the idea is they would establish this land use matrix. So within this 60-acre piece, this is what we would anticipate, this kind of population, this, this amount of commercial development. Now, the interrelationship of those land uses are all driven, controlled by the specific plan itself. So, in a typical situation, under the terms of the general plan as adopted, this is what you might see underlying the adopted specific plan, where you'd have these designations. This area in the left-hand corner would be community commercial. The area in the right-hand corner would be medium-density residential. The balance would be just standard single-family housing. Under a proposal we're talking now is, it would be a blanket specific plan, general plan designation. And then, the specific plan as the tool would guide development intensity within this defined area according to this adopted matrix. So the ultimate and maximum intensity and development would adhere to the same, same standard. So if they need to adjust a line, the whole issue is if you need to adjust a line, you know, between these two or three different types of land uses, you'd have to go through a general plan change. You know, that's, that's adding more bureaucracy, more steps to the process, and the idea is to be a little more flexible, as long as we comply with the ultimate goal and objective of the specific plan that we're dealing with. So, and I already talked about this, it won't affect other adopted specific plans. And the process would be that any amendments to the specific plan would be reviewed by the planning commission city council, as you might expect, because you're the bodies that are ultimately reviewing and approving the originals. And that no general plan amendment, this is the step being cut out, no general plan would be amendment would be necessary to adjust some of those lines, as long as they comply with the overall land use matrix. And then the process is similar, other than we're eliminating the general plan amendment. That's what those are supposed to share, one step being eliminated. Under a general plan amendment, there's rules and regs that we need to follow, one of which is SB 18, which talks about notification to native tribes, et cetera. Very specific. It's in statute, and this, this type of process would eliminate that notification period. The planning commission, planning commission had quite a bit of discussion on this. So, starting in July of this year, we presented the proposal to the commission. Commission had some very stated and deliberate concerns with what was being presented, wanted additional information, and suggested that we conduct a workshop. We did that on August 15, presented the information, and addressed the concerns raised by the commission during the July discussion, and presented the case study and some other documentation to the commission, so they would be able to understand more about what staff is suggesting. And then at the September 19 meeting, this was a continued public hearing from July, from July 18, we presented the entire matter to the commission for their consideration and deliberation. And on that night, on that meeting, the 19th, the commission heard some public testimony from a few individuals, and during their deliberation, raised very specific concerns about this process. And, and they were concerned about it removing a step in, in the process, and, and not wanting to provide that level of flexibility to, you know, future developers within specific plan areas. So at that point, the commission, on unanimous vote, recommended that the city council not approve this specific plan amendment, or I should say, this specific general plan amendment, to include a specific plan designation for the city of Riverbank. So at this point, you know, our, our recommendation to the commission was approval of this proposal. The planning commission, basically, in essence, overturned staff's recommendation, and recommended denial of this proposed general plan amendment to you, based on the following reasons. First, if the information presented related to the civic plan, general plan, does- if the information presented related to the civic plan, general plan designation is not adequate to make a recommendation for approval of the planning commission, and the planning commission felt that that type of designation would diminish the reviewing authority of future amendments to the specific plan that have a general plan, specific plan, general plan designation assigned to them. Project's exempt from SEQA. We've conducted that evaluation under the general rule, and basically, at this point, we're up to a recommendation. So you know what the commission has done, you know, the amount of work that staff has put into this. I hope by now you kind of understand the purpose behind the suggestion to create a specific plan designation, and then the wording is contained in Exhibit A as part of your resolution, so you can see in there very specifically what we're talking about. If we modify the general plan to include this, these are the types of things that we would need, such as, you know, a specific plan, defined area that it covers, you know, this thing called, you know, a matrix of anticipated land uses, which gives us building intensities and densities. It's fairly well-defined. There are other jurisdictions in the state of California that use this as a tool to eliminate confusion and to make the process a little bit simpler, and that's, in essence, what we've suggested to the planning commission and have suggested to you tonight. I can say by representative example that the developers of the Crossroads West specific plan area have asked for this type of flexibility. That's why staff has gone to this extra effort to move this forward. Their intent is, if it's available, to apply this designation to their project area. That's currently part of our review, but obviously needs to be acted upon independently of their project. We're not taking any action on Crossroads West specific plan tonight. This has everything to do with a general plan amendment to create this new general plan designation. So, are there any questions of me, or what I've said, or the materials that I presented?
Before I open it up for a public...
Before I open it up for a public hearing, is there any clarification? We'll entertain questions later on. Okay, open it. This is a public hearing? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, I close the public... Well, please do. Ma'am?
Everybody wants a copy?
Your time is rolling.
Come on, Mayor, be nice, okay? Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, council members, everybody. On the subject of this consideration of a resolution approving general plan amendment number two thousand seventeen to amend, I am speaking to you tonight to oppose the approval of the resolution before you. For background, I attended the planning commission workshop, and I'm not going to go through that since you have a copy, and let's just go to, let's just cut the chase. And here we are tonight. After more discussion with the planning commission and staff, the item three point one, by a vote of zero five, the recommendation was denial of resolution two thousand seventeen dash zero one four to the city council, motion carried by unanimous vote. And here we are tonight, considering the same resolution voted down by your own planning commission. Here are my questions. Some of them have been answered with a staff report by Mr. Anderson tonight. Who is requesting the amendment? It is stated in the report the requester is the applicant for the Crossroad West specific plan. There are owners, many owners for that, so are they all applying for this? When asked by the Riverbank Planning Commission, which other cities have adopted specific plan land use designations, staff said Brentwood, Cotati, and Colosa Counties. I just want to make clear that the specific plan that was adopted by these cities was part of the general plan amendment as a whole with an environmental impact report. This proposal tonight is asking no environmental impact report, and that is what I oppose. I was part of the general plan update many years ago. Mr. Hallenhan was there, and the area that Crossroads West is talking about, there are land use designations there. If you put this in the general plan amendment resolution, it will add to a land use designation, which is normal. Specific plans is a tool. It's a tool. It's not a plan. It's a tool to make things easier, mostly for developers. Changing the general plan is not studying the consequence of the general plan amendment, but by later adopting an EIR for the specific plan itself is guilty of piecemeal environmental review, which the SEQA Act was intended to eliminate. I think your planning commissioners know this. The general plan amendment does not merely ratify an existing EIR has been certified in the past, but authorizes traffic impact, quality, air quality, and noise. There is a lot of congestion in the area of the Crossroads West, and you're going to add a land use designation that has a specific plan which says there's no impact. Well, of course, there's no impact because there's no plan given to you yet, but in essence, there is an impact. They are planning development. This proposal is an economic growth issue, period. Nothing to do with the public interest of quality of life. A specific plan is a specific plan is a tool that allows a future applicant to designate a specific plan area as a specific plan. It is a tool. When you look at the land use element in a general plan, you have low density, high density, down the line, specific plans. It's an item. It's a tool. It's a good tool when used for the right reasons. A general plan is a comprehensive plan, a master plan, a land use plan. It is a document designed to guide the future actions of a community. A specific plan is a document designed to implement the goals and policies of the general plan. If this amendment to the, is this amendment compelling? Has the area residents, property owners, and other parties who may be affected by the amendment noticed? Does it matter that your own planning commissioners said no? Get the public involved and continue this meeting. Finally, I feel like the council cannot find the four findings that you have to find to approve this resolution. Finally, this serves as a notice of my strong opposition to approving general plan amendment number two thousand seventeen dash zero one to adopt the land use element and include a specific plan designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I also oppose it. I also agree with what Ms. Gammon said. One of the biggest problems with this issue is by not going through the general plan amendment, you decrease the opportunities for public involvement, and that should be one of the most important things to you guys, that the public gets involved. They'll have less chance this way. One of the things that was discussed at the planning commission was the effect on existing or specific plan areas. I think you have three now, the ammo plant, the downtown, and crossroads. The slide, he skipped over real fast, the same one they did there, and it's when they asked a question about the effect on current properties, that it will not have effect, but we will consider the specific plan, general plan, land use designation upon request for specific development proposal. That says no, but then again, it says yes. On your staff report tonight on the second page, it says that the plan, that this specific plan land use will only affect new plans. In other words, properties within approved specific plan, downtown, crossroads, ammo plant, will remain unchanged. But that statement is not on the amendment, and it's not in the resolution. So is it or isn't it? If it is, it's unfair, especially to a developed specific plan like downtown, where you've already got all the residence, commercial, and all that stuff down there, because one change that a developer does, and he doesn't have to amend the general plan, could have big effects. And I would like this clarification on is it or isn't it going to affect the current specific plant area?
Any other further comment?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is George Petralakis. I'm land use counsel for the Crossroad West developers. To answer some of the questions, there are three owners out there. They all, you know, made the request as the development group. I don't agree with the contention that there's any piecemeal environmental review, which I think was the most serious thing you heard, because there's no, there's no adoption here of any entitlements. It's giving you the power to, in the future, adopt such a specific plan land use designation, which I think is going to become more and more common. It's kind of cutting edge, because those specific plans get more detailed and more complex. Really, all this is about is it provides a difficulty sometimes when you want to make a plan change, because general plan amendments are limited to four times a year. And so I've been in situations where we had to make a change, but the city had either, I'm not sure, I don't remember if they had used up all four, or they had used three of the four, and you can be waiting a number of months for very simple changes. And the second point I'll make is, it's not always land use changes. Sometimes you have to tweak a road or something that's in your transportation element of the general plan. No land use implications at all, but again, you know, you run up against those four times a year changes. So we just think it's a more efficient way to do things. That's why we made the request. It's in the staff report. It didn't really come out in any of the staff or public presentation. It's really important to remember, the level of review for both remains the same. You know, what we're doing is we're getting rid of a little redundant paperwork on the general plan amendment that's limited to four times a year, but the specific plan amendment process goes through the same, you know, goes through the same process that a general plan amendment would go, basically, with planning commission recommending to the city council on any changes. So all those will be reviewed by the appropriate bodies, because these are both, whether it's amendments to a general plan or amendments to a general specific plan. When you all went to League of Cities, you know, planning school, when you first got elected, or watched a video or something, remember, those were all legislative acts, which are where the discretion of the council is the highest. It's like you're the United States Congress or the California legislature. I don't mean to insult you with either of those comparisons, but you act in a legislative capacity, and so the process leading up to that is the same, whether it's a specific plan amendment or a general plan amendment. So I don't think the city loses anything in terms of public review. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, I close public hearing. Bring it back to the council for questions and discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I've been thinking about this after I read it and I, about it, and I talked with our city manager about it when I met with him, and I want some clarification based on what I've heard from the citizens, report, our attorney, and what we discussed. I'm under the impression that this will speed up the entire process a little bit, because the general plan can only be approached four times a year to make changes. And my only concern is, how big of a change can we make with this specific plan versus, say, going to the general plan? Could you clarify that?
Yeah, John, if you want to come up, while John's coming up, I'll just say that my understanding in going through this and stepping through it with John is that it comes back to that most important litmus test, which is, does it meet that land use matrix that's included in your general plan? So if the total package remains substantively the same, and you're just moving around pieces on a chessboard, then that's what this process is intended to address.
Thanks, thanks, Sean. The issue is, and I think George hit on it, is that any plan, when you're dealing with a specific plan, I don't want to pick on the Riverbank Industrial Complex, but I will for a minute. It's a big project. It's not going to be built in one year. It's going to be built in a number of years. I mean, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, whatever it is, it's over a long period of time. Long period of time, things change, and you need to make modifications to accommodate either market change, a new vendor, a new idea, a new council direction, whatever that might be. If that change is inconsistent with the adopted specific plan, you got to go through a specific plan change, you know, whether it's a minor or a major amendment, which means it goes back to council for approval. So the governing document in all of this still is the specific plan, which has to be consistent with the general plan. So we're not throwing out the general plan. The two thousand eight general plan is valid. We're just creating another opportunity to eliminate, to eliminate any delays associated with minor changes, which do not, which are not contrary to the original approvals. Minor changes in lot lines, minor changes in, you know, whatever it might be, whatever it might be. So if someone comes in and says, look, you know, here's the, here's the adopted land use intensity and density, and I want to modify that, then that's, that's a big deal, you know? They'd have to modify the specific plan, which means you'd have to modify the matrix that was adopted for that specific plan area. So it's, it'll be dealt with accordingly. So, anyway, hopefully that answers your question.
That was a good quote, a good answer, John. I've got another question, if you don't mind. Our environmental impact report, which was brought up by our citizens, does it really affect that?
So, so there's, there's a, there's a, there's a little bit of confusion in that, in that we are somehow considering the Crossroads West project. We're not. We're not considering any project other than what's being presented, which is the creation of a new specific general plan designation that would be available for, you know, properties that are being administered through a specific plan. And it's really geared towards new specific plans, because we don't want to go back in and deal with specific plans that have already been adopted. They're, you know, they're too far down the road. So, so the idea is for new specific plan areas. So, so the environmental review that has to be done is against this defined project, which is the creation of a new specific plan, general plan designation, not the review and consideration of some larger project, three hundred and ninety acre specific plan, which has traffic, it's going to have noise, it's going to have impacts on light, it's going to have impacts on police and fire, all those types of things, which are required to be evaluated by SEQA under an environmental document, which we're about eighty percent through of right now. It hasn't been released. We're still waiting on technical documents, but it'll, it'll come out.
So then, if I'm understanding you, the environmental report would just be dealt with, if it need be, with the specific plan area that is being dealt with?
That's right. Now, with, with, the distinction is, the project that you're being asked to consider, the project you're being asked to consider tonight is simply an amendment to the general plan to allow for a specific plan designation, not assigned to any specific piece of property. Now, when you consider the Crossroads specific plan, that's a project in and of itself, and that project description will include a number of things, including general plan change, you know, circulation adjustments, you know, the adoption of the specific plan, which in essence is the zoning for the property. You might have a development agreement, which has been contemplated, and maybe a large lot map. You know, there's a whole bunch, whole package of things that will be considered and will be evaluated under the EIR that we're currently under review with.
Okay. Based on what you told me, I think this particular resolution helps us go along with our strategic planning goals to expedite business and development and make it more simple. And the only thing that I would like to see, because it was commented by, commented on by one of our speakers, is that there is in the resolution that existing areas, you know, are excluded from that, you know, existing projects and whatnot. If it wasn't there, that might be something we might do. Thank you.
Okay, me next.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to get a brief clarification for the benefits and also the cons of the specific plan designation. So my understanding is that this will help speed up the process, and then I don't know about what the cons might be.
So, so speeding up the process, I mean... So, so speeding up the process, I mean, so you're assuming you have an adopted specific plan? You have an established specific plan designation on that property? It's gone through all the public review? You have an adopted SEQA document, whatever it might be? And now what they're doing is, they're wanting to make adjustments in some of the land use patterns internal to the project that's consistent with the umbrella of approvals that they've received. Okay? That's what we're creating. Rather than, if you adjust a line, you got to go through a general plan amendment, which, as George has described, we're only able to do four times a year. And generally, most public agencies hold one of those back for themselves, and they only make three available for the public, and you have to hit that queue. So we've eliminated that step. So, planning commission, I'm here to represent what the planning commission's concerns were. The planning commission's concerns, I stated in the staff report, you've got copies of the minutes of both planning commission meetings and the workshop, was that they felt that there was a step that might have, might have been missed, or a step, a step that, you know, that would somehow diminish their review authority of the, of the amendments being presented. So they were, they were concerned with that. And that's what's stated in the staff report, so, and also in the minutes.
Thank you. I just need a little bit more clarification.
Yes.
This is going to go in effect for new specific plans. It will not be for Crossroads West.
Well, new, we haven't, we haven't considered Crossroads West. So if this was adopted, it would be available for Crossroads West, as an example, as a tool, to be able to be used.
I was getting confused, because it sounded like people were saying that that was already done, and since I haven't been on the council.
Well, I think there is, there is some confusion that this, this whole matter is, is somehow tied to the Crossroads West project. And at this point, you know, we're not ready to present that for any recommendation or consideration.
But, John, could you, just to clarify that, I think for Councilmember Fosse and for Evelyn, let's take the downtown specific plan as a specific example. This does not retroactively change anything with regard to that.
It does not.
Because that's already been approved.
But I, I want to go one step further. I mean, what I heard Evelyn say is, she's concerned that a developer could come forward and present a recommendation to modify the specific plan designation on their property or properties within that specific plan to a specific plan designation. That's what she's trying to clarify. That's what she, you know, and would that be available to them as a tool? And if that's what the, if the council's desire is, no, it wouldn't, the resolution needs to be clarified, as Cal has presented, then by all means.
The other question I have, and it's more of a clarification for myself and Evelyn, if you've already done your environmental review and everything's been approved.
Yes.
Okay? Then all of a sudden, you want to move around the blocks.
Yes.
That doesn't change the environmental review, does it?
Well, it depends. Quite, quite honestly, it depends, for example, let me go back to, let me go back to my case study, if I might. So, for example, if you wanted to shift that commercial around, it may have impacts on the, the area roadway systems. So there would be consultation, even though the building intensity and, and populations haven't changed within this blob, within this block, you know, you may have additional impacts on related traffic. And that's one of those things that we'd have to evaluate as part of that amendment. And the traffic, traffic in general would be involved and make determinations as to whether or not, you know, it's going to work or not.
Okay, so let's say it does. And how do we initiate that again if they're not coming to us? I mean, how do we?
Can you restate that? I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, so we adopt this policy.
Yes.
Okay? And let's take this as an example. They decide to move the red to the right-hand corner, which affects traffic.
So there'll be determination made, does that affect, does that adversely affect the adoption of the original specific plan and the findings, you know, as part of the SEQA documentation? If the answer is, it does not negatively affect it, then it's fine. If it does.
Okay, so look at notification.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
But we don't have to go through a whole process?
We don't have to go through a whole process.
And then we review it, and if we feel that it has an impact.
If it's, if it's found that the adjustment is significant enough to warrant a change in the specific plan, that will trigger a need to modify that specific plan, general plan designation, at the same time to modify the mix or somehow reevaluate the entire situation, because they would be required to modify the specific plan, which is a, which is a zoning, which is approved by ordinance.
So it doesn't just cancel any of that out?
No.
Okay.
Does not.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Does not cancel that out. What we're, what we're doing is, we're trying to eliminate just one step of many steps in the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Lot 100 in Katy Holmes had to do a setback modification. That still went to the planning commission, and still came to the city council. If something like that had to occur, would that still go to the planning commission, or that still go to?
To the city council.
So, so you're talking about apples, apples and oranges?
I am, but I'm talking about control.
The instrument, the instrument in this case, again, if you're applying it to downtown specific plan, or Riverbank Industrial Complex, or the new one we're considering, Crossroads West, there are provisions in those documents to allow for minor and major amendments. Minor amendments typically are reviewed and approved administratively by staff, no necessary, it's not necessary to go through a public hearing process. Something like that could be handled administratively.
Very good. That, because that took 90 days to get to this.
Right.
Planning commission, and then another 60 days to us.
That's right.
All right. All right. So before I move forward with this, we wanted to make a, an additive to that. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, they said from one of our citizens, that make sure that the language in there talks about existing areas can't be changed or whatnot, if it's not in the resolution.
Councilmember Campbell, perhaps, perhaps what we should do is, for existing specific plans that exist as of today, which as I understand are only two, which would be the downtown specific plan and the LRA specific plan, that those two would not follow this specific process, they'll exist on their own. Is that? We'll structure that in the resolution.
All right, do I have a?
Motion or a comment on item 5.2?
I make a motion, we approve item 5.2.
Oh, second.
We have a motion to approve item 5.2 and a second.
There was a motion by Barbara Martinez, second by Campbell. Councilmembers Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz. Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.3, conduct the first reading and introduction, introduction by title only of a proposed ordinance amending Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 153, zoning Section 153.325 through Section 153.326, second dwelling units, Section 153.003. Definitions, Sections 153.03 through Section 153.033. Single-family residential districts, R1 zone. Section 153.045 through Section 153.048.
Duplex residential districts, R2 zone, Section 153.060 through Section 153.064. Multiple-family residential districts, R3 zone, and Section 153.184, off-street parking requirements by repealing these sections in their entirety, and substitute them with new sections, 153.325 through Section 153.326. Accessory dwelling units, Section 153.003. Definitions, Section 153.030 through Section 153.033. Single-family residential district, R1 zone, Section 153.045 through Section 153.048. Duplex residential districts, R2 zone, Section 153.060 through Section 153.064. Multiple-family residential districts, R3 zone, and Section 153.184, off-street parking requirements through the Riverbank Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor, for reading that entire subject.
Thank God, we're only doing it by title only.
Our planning and building manager, Donna Kenny, will give this report this evening.
I don't think there's anything left for me to say. Good evening, Mayor and council members. And I have to point this way? Okay. Part of this is a result of AB 2299 and SB 1069, which are state mandates. It modifies the standards and regulations, which is the city's ability to regulate accessory dwelling units, which we've been calling second dwelling units up to this point. So its intent is to diversify the housing stock and provide another type of housing that's affordable. Oops, wrong way. Okay, some of the accessory dwelling unit amendments include just changing the term from second unit to accessory dwelling units. It shortens the time that we can, that staff, it shortens the staff review time, excuse me, to 120 days after receiving the application. In our code, it's still stated that second dwelling units require a conditional use permit, so that's being removed per the state. We normally up to now wouldn't allow tandem parking, parking and setbacks. You require a passageway to connect the dwelling unit to the original structure, and the state has removed all of that. In addition, it's changed the size. It can be a larger accessory dwelling unit now. There's no fire sprinkler requirement, the existing home doesn't require them, cannot be constructed on a vacant lot, just a whole, kind of a laundry list of, of items that the state is requiring. We also took this opportunity to ensure the document is consistent with the housing element. We, as part of our housing element, we have different programs related to policies that we have to follow through in the subsequent years after adopting the housing element, one of which is, staff is going to be taking a general plan amendment, our second one this year, and a rezone for a morale piece to the planning commission next Tuesday. That's all been public notice and is scheduled. We also are required to add farm working housing locations to the city website. And then I had spoken about the programs within the housing element. We have to allow transitional supportive housing in some residential zones, permit employee housing, we had to add an employee housing definition, and reduce the parking restrictions by half a parking space. Since we already had these items open for year review, we decided to add some more clarifications and additions, since we're, you know, not going out for a comprehensive zoning ordinance update at this time. Some of the, excuse me, some of the items included making sure that staff can have the manufactured homes that we place on residential lots to orient to the front. We also added some standards and specifications from Public Works to the code, just to make things easier for our public. So for example, the fire hydrant and fence clearance, you're required through Public Works standards to keep the fence three feet away from a hydrant. But we don't require people to get a permit for three-foot fences. And so unless it's actually in the code where they can look it up, they might put the fence right, right up against the, the hydrant. Also, our R1 section was missing some lot requirements, so we've just been referring to the existing R2 section, so that's been added to the R1. And also created a 50% limit on rear and front yard paving. We've been having some, some of the newer homes have been paving their entire backyards, their side yards or front yards, so they don't have to do yard work. Yet stormwater requirements are that we keep as much water on site to percolate into the ground. So putting a 50% limit on this paving will help with that. Staff had added some skate ramp regulations to the section, which the planning commission wanted to discuss more in depth. So they had me pull this section from the ordinance, and I'll be bringing that to them to discuss more about that. Excuse me. It came about due, due to a code enforcement issue, and staff thought it might be a good idea to require a CUP, so we could regulate some of the noise and, and visual impacts, yet still allow a homeowner to be able to have a skate ramp in their backyard, should they choose to. As far as SEQA goes, there is an exemption for, a statutory exemption from the state that rules second units. And then the other parts of the zoning code update are not really considered projects per SEQA. And so there is, excuse me, so they have no potential for resulting in physical change. This is just a paperwork change, basically. Financial impact is, we have to have our housing element consistent with state housing element laws in order for our grant applications to be considered. And so it kind of behooves us to get these updates into our gen, or zoning code in order to qualify for some grants. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on any of these issues I've brought up. Correct. Okay, it is a 2.4 acre parcel that's triangular shaped, and it's currently, the general plan designation is low density, and the zoning on it is R1 single-family residential. And in our housing element, our program calls for upgrading that to multiple, multiple-family designation and R3 for higher density. Now, the property owner has been contacted, and they are fully in support of the change. Even though it's going from R1 to R3, our R3 code still allows them to have a single-family residence there until they're able, or desire to create multiple-family housing there. It doesn't mean that we have a project, or the project is coming forward, but the state would like to see us kind of move forward and kind of prezone some of these properties to be ready in case an affordable housing developer comes through, and it would, like, less than one step for them to be able to do affordable housing.
Just can you define if I'm building a second unit behind my house?
Yes.
Or mother-in-law? I still have to go get the plan?
Correct.
I still have to go through the planning commission?
No.
So all of this is?
Just the plan, I mean, we're eliminating controls.
Correct.
And that's because of the state.
Correct. There is still, the review is at the administrative level, and we still make sure that you do meet the setbacks and densities and heights, the requirements that we've had on the books or that have been recently changed by the state. So they still have to meet all those criteria, but it is approved at a staff level.
I have a question related to something that happened a few years ago.
Yeah.
What if I wanted to build a two-story house in the back as a mother-in-law quarters for my parents or whatnot? Would that still fall within the parameters and not have to go to the planning commission?
Correct. The state allows it. They even would allow you to build a second dwelling unit on top of a detached garage if it's only five feet away from the property line.
Wow.
Any other comments, questions?
Do we have any plans for the residential housing?
No.
No, the Yalorco is a constant thing that they brought to building that kind of stuff.
No. You're welcome. You're welcome.
I'd just like to add two, two items. One is that the zoning change on the item that Vice Mayor brought up is a completely separate item that will be noticed separately, that everybody will have notice on, so it's not part of this ordinance at all. We just referenced it because it was in the letter.
Correct.
But secondly, council should be aware, as the CNN attorney and I were discussing, that this is really just the beginning. As you know, the state has made housing number-one priority this year, and so this is just the beginning of housing bills. We're going to have a variety more moving on, and the way that they force cities into complying is say you, you're not able to compete for our grants if you don't have, have these updated, so.
There was 12 bills that were signed last week by the governor. This is just one of the bills. And it's for basically increasing your housing to accommodate the, what, 25% of the housing needs? And now with 1,500 units being destroyed in Santa Rosa, that is, you may be, you may be asking to do much more. And we're building now, and we're barely meeting the minimum requirement if Crossroads West got there, but we still have to project to 2040. And if we don't meet it, money's taken away. If we have no plan for it, money's taken away. So this is just the first step.
So I'll be back.
I know.
Well done, Donna.
Thank you.
We're here to, for the approval of this ordinance to be approved for the first reading, and there'll be a second reading coming on up.
Another motion, won't we accept this first read?
A second.
We have a motion to accept the first reading of Item 5.3, and I'm not going to read it, and we have a second.
First motion made by Councilmember Campbell, second by Barbara Martinez, Councilmembers Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
A resolution authorizing the first public hearing for the 2017 Community Development Block Grant Notice of Funding Availability for the CDBG program.
Thank you, Mayor.
Our Assistant City Manager Maricela Garcia will be giving this report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight's item is the first public hearing we will hold with regards to the 2017 Notice of Funding Availability for the CDBG program. So the state has allocated $27 million in funds for the program this year, $5 million of which could be, we would be able to apply for. So some of the eligible activities, such as economic development, housing programs, multifamily activities, public services, public improvement, public facilities, and planning and technical assistance. NOFA, the NOFA has made some changes this year, and the state has implemented these changes. We must now meet not only the national objectives, but we must also meet some state objectives that were set, the first being disaster resiliency and long-term planning. This would require our general plan to be updated if it does not address any flood, fire, or disadvantaged unincorporated communities. Those who have not yet updated their general plan to include these items would receive a lower scoring and would need to commit to having these items addressed. The second is fair housing. We would have to incorporate additional public outreach measures that promote access to decision-making and program implementation for all segments of the community. And so we would have to demonstrate the fact that we have had additional media outreach or meetings held with special interest groups with regards to fair housing. The second major change that we, that was made was increasing the application maximum from $2 million to $5 million, so that was a very positive increase. Unfortunately, they've decreased the number of activities that you can apply for. In the past, we could apply for three activities, and the proposal that we have actually was for three activities. Housing programs, which is, CDBG provides a major portion of the funding for our first-time homebuyer and our housing rehabilitation program. We've had successful awards and grants since 2003. We also have public improvements, so we wanted to include an application for ADA improvements in our disadvantaged areas, such as the state streets. And then the third proposal, which the city council has received information on, is public facilities, such as the community center rehabilitation project that Sue presented, and that has, she has received partial funding for projects through the housing-related perks grant, but it wouldn't be sufficient to do the two projects that she had in mind. So tonight, it's just recommended that the city council open the public hearing and solicit any public input with regards to any additional activities that they would like us to consider prior to bringing a final application to the city council for consideration. So internally, staff will be discussing the three activities that, that are on the table and seeing which two we would be including in the application.
Very good. Any comments before I open the public hearing? This is a public hearing? Anyone from the public wish to have put, have input into this important grant? Saying none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a recommendation and/or consideration.
I make a recommendation that we accept this first public hearing?
I second.
We have a motion to accept by Vice Mayor and a second by Councilmember Fosse.
Councilmembers Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
LRA Item 6.1, the Local Redevelopment Authority LRA Budget Report Fiscal Year End 2016 to 2017.
Thank you, Mayor. Our administrative analyst and all-around budget cruncher, Melissa Holdaway, is very excited to give this report this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Authority members. I bring forth the presentation for the fiscal year-end 2016-17 year-end budget for the Local As you know, our budget consists of three separate funds. Fund 197 is revenue generated from the site to include rents, utilities, miscellaneous revenues, such as propane revenue, printing costs that the resident, or the tenants on-site use, and of course, our O&amp;M, which is the operations and maintenance reimbursements from the Army. Our Fund 198 grant is our grant fund, mainly consisting of the Office of Economic Adjustment Grant and any other grants that fund any part of our salaries, administrative costs, and most contractual services. Fund 199 is our Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement, and that funds specifically to the environmental cleanup of the site. Budget items to note, in Fund 197, our caretaker revenue was not received before year-end, and this is due to a new mechanism the Army is using to reimburse us for the O&amp;M payments that are past due. We are slightly under budget on our site expenditures, and in Fund 198, we were under-budget, disencumbering $3,500 at the grant expiration. On Fund 199, we do have a carryover of funds to continue the ESCA work, and this is a substantial amount, but we do get it in advance, and so we can have the money on hand to pay our contractors. The budget versus actual revenues, at mid-year, we budgeted about $21 million in revenue, and in actuality, we got about $22 million, and that is specifically to the rents. We do have new tenants that came into the site since January. Our miscellaneous revenue was up a little bit because of the propane that a tenant is using quite a bit of. And then our ESCA grant, we did, requested more funds than anticipated because the project was moving pretty quickly, but it slowed down due to EPA not approving the stat plan yet, and so we're waiting on that approval from EPA. Budget versus actual expenses, at mid-year, we budgeted about $21 million in expenses, and in actuality, we had $17 million. This is due to our budget categories, or we're under-budget, and then professional services, we were a little over-budget, and that is due to some unexpected legal costs that came through in city attorney bills. And then our grant revenues are slow at spending the funds due to the reason I told you with the EPA, and also with CDBG, we are trying to get a couple of RFPs out to finish that scope of work. At year-end, our ending balance is about $5.5 million. That is the ESCA carryover. At the beginning of the year, for our prior year, we had about $6 million, and the revenues that came in this year were about 1.3 million, grants $700,000. The ESCA we received was $14 million, with a total revenue of $22 million, and the expenditures were $17 million. So our budget balance for the beginning of 1718 is about $5.5 million. Any questions or comments?
Questions or comments? I have just a couple, you still have a couple of revenues outstanding coming in?
Yes, we do.
How much do you expect?
About $200,000 from O&amp;M.
Okay.
And then we do have some accruals from past due balances, about $50,000.
Okay. The Army all paid up?
The Army is not paid up.
Okay.
That is the money we're waiting on.
The second item, you said EPA, Cal or US?
It would be California.
US?
Is it California or US? Is it US?
US won't be there on Tuesday, but Cal will. Okay. I have no further question. Any questions or comments from the public? I'm very pleased with the way the operations are going, Debbie. Great job, great job. All right. Bring it back to the council for recommendation and/or action.
I make a motion, we approve Item 6.1.
I second that motion.
We have a motion to approve and a second on LAR Item 6.1.
That was first motion by Authority Member.
Barbara Martinez.
Barbara Martinez, second by Vice Chair Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Authority Members Fosse.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, Adoption of Resolution to Approve the List of Projects to Be Funded by the Senate Bill SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Development Services Administration Manager Kathleen Kleek will be giving this report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
Good evening.
So tonight, we have the Senate Bill SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. So tonight, recommending that the city council approve a resolution accepting the list of projects to be funded with Senate Bill SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. So on April 28, 2017, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Focus of the bill is to address basic road maintenance, rehabilitation, and critical safety needs. One of the requirements to receive the funding is for cities to submit an approved project list adopted by the city council. The estimated SB 1 funding the city of Riverbank will receive in fiscal year 1718 for the road maintenance and rehabilitation account is roughly around $135,000. It's not a whole lot of money, but it is money, and we are glad to have it. So staff met, we talked with the Public Works Superintendent, Public Works Supervisor, and our engineer, and we came up with the best use for the funds would be to be able to crack seal some of the roads that need some crack sealing before our slurry seal project in the spring. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do all the roads that we need to, but we were at least able to do, get some of those roads done. The RMA funding the city will receive for fiscal year will not cover all the roads, like I stated, but there still are some additional ones that need to be crack sealed before a slurry. So the remaining roads in need of crack sealing will be repaired with Measure L funds prior to the 2018 spring slurry seal project. We just didn't have enough funds to do all the, all the roads that we needed to, or the time to assess all of them. We do have a pavement management program. It does have the PCI, which is the Pavement Condition Index, which we can look at, but unfortunately, it doesn't tell us which roads have the cracking, and it's one of those maintenance issues where you have to actually physically go out and look at them. So we took parts of the city, started with that. We will continue with that review of the rest of the roads in the city to make sure that we cover that. To get the, to have the crack sealing done prior to the slurry, at least the cracks will be sealed, all the little alligator cracks, and then with the slurry over it, and should get better life out of the road. So, sorry that it's so small, but these are some of the, the roads that we've identified that will get the crack sealing. So tonight's recommendation is for the city council to approve a resolution accepting the list of projects to be funded with the Senate Bill SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. So, any questions?
Do we have to close some of the streets in order to complete this project or these projects?
I believe they'd be closed for a short period of time. I don't think it's a long period of time for crack sealing.
Okay.
It's a different process. They just go through and they would seal the.
Like slurry seal.
The slurry seal will be closing when we do that. This one is different, right.
Okay.
Now, the crack sealing, we did have the, go out to bid for a crack seal or for a slurry seal project. That'll be coming to you at the next council meeting where we can award that, that bid to the, to our low bidder.
Okay, and so our city staff will be filling these?
No, we will, we'll contract that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Unfortunately, we don't have the manpower, and Michael would not want me to take his guys to do that.
You know, Mayor, one other component to this that we're going to bring back and discuss it in detail that is a concern for Riverbank is there's a component of the SB 1 bill that's called the Maintenance of Effort. And what that essentially did was it dedicated a number of fiscal years dating back a couple, and it essentially says you can't access your maintenance money from SB 1 unless you spend what you were spending in those fiscal years towards roads. We happen to have a couple of fiscal years during that timeframe where the general fund was subsidizing the road account quite a bit. So Maricela and Kathleen and I are kind of working on solutions, and, and unfortunately, it's very complicated, but we will be bringing that back so the council's fully aware of kind of what we're talking about there.
So we can't access that $134,000 that you described, or whatever the figure was, until we expand from the general fund about $245,000?
Essentially, but, but.
In that Maintenance of Effort, it wasn't road maintenance, it was, from my understanding, was emergencies such as the outfall and some of the others.
That's what we're drilling down to, is some of them may have been supplements to, to bridge the gap in projects, and some of them may not have been. It may have been just deficits in the road fund that, that we were supplementing. So we're looking, we're not the only city in this position. There's many, many cities in this position, especially smaller jurisdictions, and so we're, we're on it. We're, we're going to access that money one way or the other.
When I saw that Maintenance of Effort and the amount that they said that we spent, I couldn't believe that we spent that amount.
Yeah. So we're doing kind of a forensic accounting of that, to be sure.
Thank you. And, and who do you address that with? We're, we're going to approve you, but we're, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Well, this is just an issue that we.
These are good questions.
It's been out there, and we just don't, we want it to be crystal clear as we go forward. We're working with this. The state, state has an office that does all of their road auditing. I believe that's probably who we're working with, right?
Yeah, so with the State Comptroller's Office, they've set up an appeal process, and so they've sent us applications that we need to complete in order to submit our appeal, and we'll be working with them on this item.
Okay, good, thank you. I did have that as a question. Not any longer. Anyone from the public wish to comment on Item 6.2? Saying none, bring it back. Say none, and bring it back to the council for recommendation and/or approval.
I make a motion that we accept item 6.2 as stated.
I second.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
No, he made the motion second by Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Thank you. Councilmembers Fosse?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.3, a resolution authorizing two applications to the State Water Resources Control Board Water Recycling Funding Program, and authorization for a designated authorized representative to apply for, make certain representations regarding, and accepted financial assistance from the State Water Resources Control Board for the Riverbank Recycled Water Project.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Public Works Superintendent, Michael Riddell, is going to come up and give a report on this. I just want to clarify one specific component, because there's been some question about it. Staff is not requesting any authorization of funding at this time. This is just to move forward with the application process only. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Sean, City Manager. Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Sean kind of stole my thunder right off the top.
He does that.
As he said, this is not a recommendation for funding. This is a recommendation for a resolution that allows us to apply. As discussions that Sean and I had previously, he had, through a contact at the State Water Board, they assured us that even if we applied and were awarded, we would not be required to fund unless we could. In other words, what they're saying is, if they were given $75,000, unless we had the $75,000 to match it, it's not like they're going to do anything, because we're not going to spend any of their money. So we are looking to apply for two grants. I do not have a power presentation for you, as we have gone through this on a couple of different occasions previously with Neil Caldwell, KSN Engineering. He applied all the particulars there. So the two grants that we're looking to apply for are the, to study the alternatives in cost and feasibility of the treatment plant improvements, and the study of the alternative locations for recycled water use, including the necessary facilities and improvements for the recycled water delivery, which is in your staff report. Now, this is kind of a dual-use item for us. We're getting a little bit of money out of the state to help us along. And one instance of this is obviously, is to look at the feasibility of this and what we can do, but it also can kind of give us the opportunity to give our, get ourselves a half-funded mini wastewater treatment plant. I'm losing...
Master plan.
There you go, thank you. Brain kind of quit on me there for a minute. A kind of a mini master plan for our wastewater treatment plant that can kind of give us a direction that we can go, and this we can use in the near-to midterm future. So I'd be happy to ask for any questions that you may have.
This is in accordance with our strategic plan, and it is also in something that, if approved, then we can come up with the changes to the wastewater treatment plant, position ourselves to be in a positive light when the state says, we're going to take control of your groundwater.
Yes, sir. And two impacts there, actually, because if we do look at, traditionally with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, if you look at any type of regionalization, they tend to lift all the roadblocks.
Right.
They tend to help you out considerably more when you're doing something like this. How feasible it will be, we won't know until we do a study, and that's all part of this. But like I said, there again, we get that dual use of that money.
Any comments, questions? Any comments or questions from the public?
I don't have a comment regarding the project itself. My comments and concerns are regarding the funding. Throughout this staff report, on almost every page, there's comments of future economic development, cost of future treatment disposal, need to serve future economic growth. Every page, it refers to future users, future projects. But the financial, on the financial impact, it shows that the funding is going to be through the sewer enterprise fund. My question is, since this is obviously for future impacts, and this little thing you sent out when you raised our rates specifically states that our increase of funds that we're paying are supposed to be used for operations and maintenance, that's now, not in the future. Capital improvement projects, which this is not on the CIP list, emergency reserves, and debt service. And Prop 218, which was what that was gone through, under Section 6, Part 2, down at the bottom, it specifically says that the revenues cannot exceed the funds required to provide the property related to service, should not be used for a purpose other than for which the fee or charge was imposed, which was those four items. The amount of fee imposed upon any person or parcel should not exceed the cost of the service attributed to the parcel, and that fee charges based on, based on potential or future use of a service are not permitted. So I'm wondering, I'd like to know clarification on how you justify using money out of our Prop 218 sewer fund for this project.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? I'll bring it back. We're not expending any money right now. But one thing that has to be addressed, and it probably will be addressed by a 218 process, is that because this is going to be a benefit of existing, should they be exempt from paying as well as future? Future will, but we need to do something to protect, even if we do nothing in growth, we need to do something to protect our water in the next eight years.
Thank you, Mayor. And what I would add to that is that everyone's 100% right, it's not in our CIP. And if we're going to use current sewer reserves or revenues to pay for the study in the future, and we'll have a full analysis of this if we get the grant, it would be, need to be something that we add into our CIP, and so we'd, council would have to make some decisions about what kinds of project do you move down as a result of that. But I think one of the things that Michael alludes to in the report is that we operate under an extremely old wastewater permit, and the possibility exists, as it does for all the little towns that have pond-based systems, that the state eventually gets to a point where they come in and say, you're going to do tertiary treatment, and you're, we're not going to renew your permit or allow growth, or there's a variety of mechanisms they can use to force you into that eventual process. So it is a problem for future growth, but it also is a problem for future residents and, you know, co-owners of this system, which every resident is. So that's sort of some of the justification for the investment. But again, we'll get into that if we get the grant, we'll cross that bridge.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Good. Make a recommendation. Item 6.3, I move that we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
O'Brien recommended, and a second by Councilmember Campbell.
Councilmembers Fosse?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.1, staff comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Just three very quick items this evening. As everybody knows, wine and cheese this weekend. If you haven't got your tickets, please go to Recreation, they're still available. Those who are watching on TV this evening, or looking at our flat screens, you may notice that we've gone through a recent technology upgrade here in the council chambers. It's a project that been, we've kind of put on ice for, what I understand, was a number of years. Norma and Annabella, and in particular, spent a lot of time on this project, you know, which was in addition to their normal, already very full duties. It has turned out really well. If you, the quality of the picture, in addition to a lot of the other wiring that was done in this chambers, which is complicated, has been a major upgrade. It's not complete, there are extras that we need to still move forward on, and so we're looking at those options. But I just wanted to specifically point those two out, because it was a lot of work to get there. And so we hope it'll serve the city for a long time moving forward. Finally, next Tuesday at 10 o'clock, there'll be a transfer ceremony at our Army and Ammunition Depot, and I think Debbie would tell you that it's been almost as much work as actually getting the property transferred. But we're not party planners, that's one of the things we've learned. But it should be a good time. It's really something we think is worth spending a little time to celebrate, because it's something the city and Debbie in particular have been working for a long time to achieve. So that's all we have this evening. Thank you.
Council comments? Councilmember Fosse?
Hi, just would like to remind everybody to keep those in Northern California in their thoughts and prayers. There's a lot of fires, and I was watching tonight on the news, the devastation up there is sad. And so just keep them in your prayers, and do all we can here to make sure they don't happen here.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
First of all, I'd like to thank Debbie and the whole LRA staff for all the work they put in to get us to the point where we're, we now are. And special thanks to Norma and Annabella for the hard work they put into making this system. It's great. I look so much better on that TV, I'll tell you.
No, you don't.
And, well, that's my opinion, so you're entitled to yours. And thank the entire staff for their thorough reports tonight. I think it expedited this meeting in tremendous ways. And I'd like to encourage the citizens to attend city school and nonprofit functions that are going to be going on a lot this month.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
There will be a flu shot clinic on Friday, October 20th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m. at the community center, and it is open to the public. And I hope to see everyone at our after-school program, the Lights On event. There are, you'd be surprised how many children come out, families that come to that event. And it's really, just so that they can have fun, and to know that after-school programs are there for them. And then, as Cindy was saying, prayers and our thoughts are to those that are caught up in the fires, but also let's not forget those that are victims of the hurricane, especially those in Puerto Rico. It's going to take a long time for them to recover, so, and I have family there. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Everything I had has already been said.
Okay, thank you.
Guys all covered it.
Well, they missed Las Vegas.
There you go. Thank you.
Las Vegas was a tragedy which hopefully we can come to terms with as a nation. We did send our condolences and our support to the City of Las Vegas, as well as Santa Rosa, and some of the other areas. So keep them in your thoughts. I would like to have updates on the Maintenance of Effort appeals. I'm quite concerned about that. When I first saw it, it was, I thought they, it was wrong. I mean, completely, we wouldn't do that, and we did. So we have to figure out how we can minimize that, so we can maximize SB1 funding, which everyone else is maximizing. But the LRA, I transferred the first property, I can't express my gratitude deeply enough to you, Debbie, and, okay, you too. But no, we're moving along. One of the comments were made by Mr. Letterly to me was that he was very impressed with how much this operation has progressed, and that they're considering transfer of other properties next year. However, we'll wait to see, because this was supposed to be done a long time ago, so we'll just wait, not hold our breath. But it would be great if we can continue getting more and more properties transferred earlier. And I would like to definitely take a look at 7:00 p.m. here in the City Council. The air is off.
Yes, definitely.
Air is off? Everyone feels it back there? I thought it was because I was on the hot seat, but no. No, I would like to have that investigated. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. I want to thank everyone for their participation. Be safe out there.
Always.
Yes, I did get a sub.
Are you going to do a hula hoop?
Can I do more than three revolutions of a hula hoop?
Yes, four.